Board Member Earl. Board Member Earl. Board Member Hanson.
Present.
Board Member Hart. Board Member Hart. Chair Huntsman.
Happy Friday to everyone.
Board Member Hutchings.
I'm here.
Board Member Hymus.
Here.
Board Member Lear.
Here.
Board Member Moss. Board Member Moss. Board Member Norton.
Hello, everyone.
And Board Member Street.
I'm here.
Great, it looks like we have a quorum, so we will go ahead and get started, and if our four fellow board members join us, they will be welcomed.
Cindy, this is Janet, I'm here.
Oh, wonderful, hello Janet.
Molly's here.
Hi Molly, great to have you. Did we get Board Member Earl or Board Member Moss?
Moss is on his way.
Excellent. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and move forward, I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to our Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Jennifer Bronson, and our SOEP Educational Specialist, Dr. Corey Cant.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis, so we're here today to, for a primary reason, the legislature has asked us to be here, and thank you for having this opportunity for this study session to address the legislature's request, so we're going to take you through, Dr. Corey Cant will be here for really the nitty gritty, get in the weeds, she knows the details that you will probably want to dig into as we need to today, and I'll cover kind of the high level general overview as we go. So ultimately, the goal of this session today is to take action on the funding recommendations, so the legislature requested that the board make a funding recommendation on how to continue to afford SOEP in the private and homeschool space. We'll address why is this an issue, what is the legislature requesting, and then also provide you with some options that we've generated and vetted with the SOEP Working Group to see what would be recommended to you for how to resolve the issue that we're facing. So that's kind of the goal for today, and we'll just start in with what the request is, if I can get my slide deck to change, there we go. So in special session, back in session five that we had during COVID, when we had all of those legislative sessions, the legislature requested for the board to evaluate the participation of our homeschool and private school students in the statewide online education program, and how to manage future growth. So for those of you that aren't aware, growth of the program has been significant, and we'll look here shortly at some data to kind of indicate that growth. And the funding is contingent, we kind of get a certain amount of funding every year, and it gets exhausted by second semester, so we've got students who are trying to enroll in second semester SOEP courses, who we have to say, oh, we need to put you on hold, we're out of money, or we only can afford the seniors that are graduating, others will have to find a different route to earning these credits. And you can imagine that creates some discomfort in the predictability, the consistency, the reliability of the program for both students and families, and so the legislature has had us come for the last three years asking for more money every year to cover the demand, and so they would like a longer term solution than having to advocate for additional funding each legislative session. So their recommendation, or the recommendations they want from the board, they requested prior to August 30th, and that's why we're here, is to be able to get those recommendations reviewed, and hopefully one of them selected to be able to send on to the legislature for their consideration. So what's the problem we're trying to address, that's ultimately, why did the legislature say we need some recommendations on funding, and it really is this growth piece? So the levels of growth are predictable in that we know we're getting more students in the program every year, what's unpredictable is the number of students and the number of credits those students want to participate in. So this program's been around for about a decade now, so you can see where we started, quarter credits is the middle column, the number of credits that students were earning back in the first year of the program, and the number of unique students. So a unique student means they're taking one or more courses, so we're not counting the multiple times in the student pile, but that student may take three credits in the middle column. So as you kind of progress down and see the historical record, we had a huge boom the last few years, and anticipating for that boom to continue, maybe not to the degree that it has in the last few, but this wasn't a COVID issue, this was really our private schools have found great value in using the SOEP program to diversify their coursework, to be able to get access to courses that their students wouldn't have otherwise, and so that growth started with a couple of privates, and then them sharing their experience quickly spread to many of the others. And so we're actually expecting additional growth in the homeschool, no, the private school arena this year, homeschool remains a little more static, and we'll look at that data here in just a moment. So just wanted to kind of give you context as to how you can see it's a little unpredictable of what we should plan for, and the amount of funding needed to be able to cover the demands. So with that said, here's what we requested last year, in terms of what we were seeing in enrollment, and we were well under the $9 million that were being requested, and so we took, you can see homeschool is a very small amount of this pile, private school has definitely ramped up in terms of the percentage of students using it in the private school environment, and that's added to our costs. With the projections we're seeing this year, you'll see last year we were projecting about 5.3 million, this year we're actually projecting closer to 9 million due to the growth in private. It is the best estimate based on what we are seeing in the enrollment data and the feedback we're getting from the private schools, and we were lucky enough this year to have that kind of funding granted for the SOEP program. The issue is, if we hit the funding cliff and we have more enrollments than we anticipated, we then have to shut down enrollment, tell students, and turn them away, and that becomes kind of an uncomfortable situation. So we're hopeful this year is a year we won't be coming and saying, we need more money with the estimates that Dr. Cant has done, that we are pretty confident where we landed that that should cover enrollment this year. But again, because it evolves and adds each additional year, it's hard to know, and there is no growth mechanism built in for this beyond just the WPU percentage, because the courses go up in cost associated with the WPU increase. So it's hard to kind of have that reliable predictive population. So in terms of proposals of how to solve this issue, we have three options, kind of four, there's a 3A and a 3B, so we have option one, and we'll go into depth on each of these options, so you kind of get to hear the big ideas, and then we can also talk specifically to the pros and cons for each of these options. So option one, and when you are, hopefully get to vote later today and take action on this item, you'll be picking which option you prefer, or the board could make up a new option, and we will just name it option four. So option one is to fully fund to meet demand, so basically saying, and I'll get into each one, I'm going to just over review these. Option two is fee structure, charging fees for students to participate if they're private or homeschool students. And then option three is to leverage the WPU, and we'll talk about two different ways to do that. So option one is to fully fund to meet the demand. Basically, this option is, take what we currently have right now and say to the legislature, we want a clause in there that says we will add additional funding up to a certain amount without you having to come and ask, and that at least gets us a buffer of, here's what we're being allocated, but if you go over that, we would also guarantee from the legislature that we would pay that additional money, so you could, you know, make true on all the payments to the providers for these students. It still has risk involved, because we can't perfectly predict how much money it would take, but we could have kind of this kind of protection of the cliff of funding, so that is option one, and I'm going into very basics, and then Corey can go into more of the pros and cons specific, if there are certain options that we want to discuss in more depth. Option two is a fee structure, this one, we could implement a fee structure, it would be really hard to know how much we need to charge each student, because you'd have to ask for that fee at the beginning of their enrollment, and with not knowing what the population's going to be, implementing a fee structure becomes kind of, could put us in the same situation we are now, if we don't overestimate how much we think it's going to cost. There is also that kind of perspective or philosophy, a lot of this conversation today will be somewhat philosophical, do we believe that all students should have the opportunity to have access to SOEP, or do we believe that it's a public education service and private school students should be going through their public school to get access? That is some of the philosophical pieces you'll have today. In a fee structure model, state taxpayers are paying in for this SOEP program, and to provide an additional fee for them to participate may not be well received by the public in those private homeschool settings. So that's fee structure, both the little pros and cons, mostly cons, just because it would still be hard to predict and guarantee that we're bringing in enough in fees to cover the cost of the program. Option three has two options, we originally had one option, but then we presented this information in preparation for the study session to our working group that the Finance Committee has charged us to lead, and they had a second option within that same kind of line of thinking. So the first option is WPU, basically send the students in private school back to their public school providers and have them enroll in SOEP through their public school. That is an additional cost, so the amount that we pay for private school students is substantially less, almost about half for students to participate in SOEP than what we pay for them to participate in the LEA setting, and that's because the wraparound services that you're provided in an LEA setting are things like counseling, special education services, some of those ancillary supplemental services, that when a student is in private school in an SOEP setting, they are not afforded those same resources, and so the cost is less in the private setting. So from a WPU option for option A, option A would actually cost the state more money, because you would be paying a higher value in WPU for that private school student attending in the public setting. So the working group, which has a few superintendents, an assistant superintendent, a principal, a K-12 advisor, a BA, and a USBA representative, that working group said, what about charging the private school cost, we won't be responsible for providing those wraparound services as we would for a public student, and then the cost can be similarly the same with some indirect costs coming in to afford for the administrative burden that enrolling those students would be to the LEAs. So that's option 3B. 3B is have a private school cost without the need for those wraparound services, and add just a little bit more for those indirect cost coverage to handle the administrative burden. So those are kind of the big high level pieces. I wanted to kind of pause here and see if there are some questions, or if you would like us to go back to each option, and Corey can clearly lay out the differences between, like what the pros are for each option and what the cons are, so I could use a little direction on how you'd like to proceed.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Ah, mine's up.
Is your up? Okay.
Yeah.
For Hart, sorry, I'm scrolling, oh. Four hands now, let's hear from Board Member Hart, and then Board Member Lear, and then Board Member Klein, and then Board Member Moss.
Okay, I have a really dumb question, I'm just going to preface that. How, what's the mechanism that makes, like, who's charging, like, how does it become double for a public school student versus a private? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, and Corey is really good at this, so I'm going to, if it's okay with the Vice Chair, if Corey could take this one, she can, she's the master of the finance.
Yes, please.
Okay, so Corey Cant, the statewide online education program, program specialist for the State Board of Education, so when a student is funded through the statewide online education program, they're fully funded as if they are enrolled in any other class in their LEA. So right now, the per pupil, per credit funding for that credit hour, assuming a whole credit hour, a student takes a one-year course, it's a whole credit hour, that funding is $1,434 per credit hour, so that's what goes to the LEA. Okay, now SOEP statute set up a menu of course fees that are tiered on the basis of the cost of providing content, and additionally, you know, through the history of the program and the way these fees were derived, an additional, at the very first, an additional 23% of funding was taken off of the, just kind of out of the mix, so that LEAs could cover facilities costs, which are about, on average, throughout the state, about 23% of total funding. So we started out by taking that 23% out, the, well, the legislature started out, the legislature then simply divided that remaining per pupil funding by eight, and saying, all courses cost the same. That obviously, you know, isn't very representative of what happens in LEAs, so the next year they changed statutes to tier course fees on the basis of cost content. So based on the cost of content of providing courses, those fee tiers set forward by the legislature, every year, we tabulate total demand, which is total demand for all courses, we just divide that by the number of credits demanded, and we get an average, what we call a weighted average cost of courses, it's just an average across the whole program. That average is $723. Okay, so 723, it turns out, is exactly 50% of total funding, and this is general fund funding, this is not varieties of restricted funding. And I've had Brett Balthazar in our School Finance section figure this all for me, because it turns out that certain tax elements have to be taken out and so on, so he was very meticulous in the way he, you know, verified all of this, but that's where you're getting that 50% from, 1,400 versus seven, on average, 700, which is send away to the provider to cover instruct, in instruction, curriculum, and delivery services. That other 15% will remain with the primary school of record to cover facilities, counseling, you know, as Jennifer said, all other centralized or ancillary costs. Do I have permission to call on people with their hands raised?
No, we already have an order, thank you. Go ahead, Board Member Lear.
I, I had a hard time following what Corey just explained, but then I'm not a great money person, so maybe that, well, maybe, I would hope maybe we can come back to that, but I kind of had a higher level number of comments, first of all, this is our chance to do this right, to get rid of some of the problems that I see have evolved with this program, and so some of the things that I think are unfair to LEAs that have evolved with, as the programs evolved, and I, and it just keeps, I feel like it keeps piling on to LEAs. So in terms of choosing A, B, or C, let me just tell you what my priorities and concerns are, and then when we talk about A, B, and C again, I hope somebody can tell me, no, A has no additional burdens, B has, you know, this, so you can tell me, so I can make an informed choice based on the priorities I have. So first of all, and there's just, there's not a whole lot of these, so don't hang them on forever. First of all, I would like to choose a, an option that has the fewest, places the fewest burdens on LEAs. We were sold this program initially, because these kids would just be leaving the LEA, and oh, good for you, lower class size, well, it's not turned out that way, now they not only have to provide space for the kids, they have to provide equipment for the kids, and they also have to weigh their fees, and there's also some evaluation requirements that are thrown in there, so I want to make sure there's no additional burdens on LEAs. Secondly, I want to know right up front, what would be about fee waivers? If a kid is somehow attending a private school on a scholarship, and he comes to the public school to take this program, who's going to be responsible for that waiver? Is it going to be built into the program costs, is it going to be this school district where he lives, something else? And the third thing is, there is so much duplication now, maybe when this program started and sort of spun off from the electronic high school, maybe there were a few online programs, but now almost every district, almost every LEA has an online program. Would one option be a sort of a more, maybe super simplistic one of just saying, let's take all the money that's going into the SOEP, give it all to LEAs to build their online programs, and tell every kid, you go to your resident school district where you live, private school kid, homeschool kid, and your resident district will provide you an online option. So I just hope we take the opportunity to look at the needless duplication that exists right now with all of these online, proliferating online options, and we say, is there a more efficient way to spend this money and serve students? And the last thing I'll say is, I want it to be an even-handed option, that where homeschool, private school students don't have more options than traditional schools do, than traditional students do, because right now, if a traditional, if a kid in school in Salt Lake wants to go to Laura's program in Washington District, Salt Lake has to pay for that. But now somehow we're saying, if you're a private school student, and you want to take these courses, you, we're going to find a way that it doesn't, it probably doesn't cost you anything. And I, so I'm trying to hope that there is a level playing field out there between all of these different students in different situations. So I just wanted to lay out my priorities, and I know that you don't remember those, and, but we'll come back to them, and every time I will ask, what about fee waiver kits? You know, what about the, how is this duplicating and triplicating what we already have? Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Cant, can you address, there were some comments in there, but I think the question, and Board Member Lear, tell me if I missed one, is, is, do fee waivers apply in this instance, can you answer that question?
Just that one piece, but actually, that's only a little piece, I was just looking for these answers farther down the line, but I'd love to know what you think about the waiver problem.
Okay, well, remember that the construction of this program is that the student only remains in enrollment, in a primary school of enrollment who collects full funding, and retains all responsibilities for the student except what they are contracting with a provider to provide, which is only instruction, content, and delivery. That's why those providers are getting about 50% of the funding that they could if they allowed these students to enroll regularly, not through this program. Okay, so that primary LEA being left with 50% of the funding, and being responsible for the whole array of services they would provide any other student, well, if they have a student sitting in their classrooms who are, who is taking their own online classes, and that's a fee waiver student, and that student needs a computer, that LEA will be providing, if, you know, if that computer is provided as a part of their fee waiver policy, that LEA will be providing that computer to their own online student to take their own online classes. They have now contracted through SOEP with an external provider to a class to their, to provide a class to their students. They are the ones funded to do that, they are the ones who have that responsibility for taking fee waiver applications, determining fee waiver eligibility, so on. Our providers are not funded for that, they have no ability to verify that student's fee waiver status, and so rule centers the responsibility for being responsible for any fee waiver materials that the student may need on the primary LEA of enrollment.
So can I ask, can I ask the follow-up just quickly, Cindy, I don't want to dominate it, but.
A quick follow-up, and then we're going to move to Board Member.
So what you're saying is, and I have had a longstanding argument with you about 60% of what, and your amount of 60, of the total amount is way larger than what I see, but the provider's also getting money, so the provider could be responsible for that, and I get kind of short shrift to your concerns about, they can't verify, of course it could, just get permission, they don't have a way to evaluate, of course they do. So it could be the provider, but you're saying it is automatically the school of enrollment, which is the resident district, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I am, they are the one that retains all responsibility for the child except what they have specifically contracted with a provider to provide, which is instruction, curriculum, and delivery, that is all that is encompassed in that compressed fee schedule provided by the legislature.
I'd argue that instruction and delivery have fees attached, and so they do contract to that, but okay, thanks for the answer.
Board Member Klein.
Okay, so I'm not sure if my question was asked, or if I, this is a little bit complicated, obviously, so my question was, and maybe this is a dumb question, maybe I should preface this as well, you said it, the cost is less for the private and homeschool setting, because you don't have all of the other costs associated with the wraparound services, and yet, am I understanding right, these are the ones that you want to charge fees for, plus an additional, possibly additional administrative cost, and yet, all of them are taxpayers, right? So wouldn't it make sense to just charge the extra administrative costs and not fees on top of that? Does that make sense?
May I respond, Davis?
Yes.
So for this one, yes, so that's option two, the fee structure, is saying, well, we already pay this kind of generic cost, and now we're going to charge you a fee on top of that, because so many students are enrolling, we're going to make you kind of pay for that, because the legislature is not willing potentially to fund that amount, and that's where the fee structure would come in, it's basically the legislature saying, we're going to fund up to this amount, if you have more enrollment than that, you're going to need to put a fee structure in, that's option two. What I'm hearing from me, Board Member Klein, option two, not the greatest idea, we as staff would agree, it's not our favorite either, it would be hard to track, and not guaranteed that we wouldn't go in the hole from a money standpoint. So the option three, bringing it to the LEA, where the private schools no longer directly go with the provider, which getting into Board Member Lear's question around that, the resources, the private school would be responsible for like the technology and access, just like a LEA would be responsible for an LEA student, and giving that, where the provider's just offering the course content, and that's kind of the shared burden, so the least burden on LEAs is A and B. So A, they don't deal with the private school homeschool students, they stay in the current structure they're in, option A is to kind of hold status quo, but put some kind of buffer in place to allow us to go over the legislative allocation, given we have gone over it every year for the last three years, and to have a kind of safety net in place for us to go over and still be able to enroll students without having to wait for additional funding to be approved. That's what option A does, option A is status quo, but allows us to stop having this funding cliff. Option B means we're going to add more costs to the families to participate that are in private and homeschool, to cover the funding gap between what the legislature is willing to fund and what the cost of the program is. Option 3A puts it on, we know. Option three A puts it on, we no longer have the private side of this program. We would just keep the homeschool where homeschool students can enroll. But private students would need to enroll in their public LEA that's in their area to participate in SOEP program. At the true value of the WPU, it is a higher cost. For example, I think health or, or maybe it's PE. PE is like a $350 class. If I were going to try and take a PE class at a public school, it costs more due to all the kind of indirect issues of like having a space, turning the lights on, having a teacher, all of those things. The cost is more than 350. And that's where that WPU value difference is. So within option B, it does add burden, so to get back to board member Lear's question, because now you have students that were being enrolled directly between the private school and the, the provider. They now have to route through the public, enroll in the public school to then take the SOEP program. So administrative burden is increased in option three A and three B. But they do allow for, if, if there's a philosophical question around, is it public education's dollars responsible for paying for private school students? Option three gets out of that philosophical debate and says, public education dollars don't pay for private school students. We are going to have them route through the public education system for this service. Where option A remains philosophically, we pay for all Utah's kids through option A. Anyone who wants to enroll, we just have to address the funding cliff that we hit every year in option A with a legislative kind of statement that says, we will pay, and maybe there's a limit up to how much they pay beyond what they allocated in that fiscal year for that program. So hopefully that gets a little bit at what you were asking, board member Klein, and reiterate some of the board member Lear's concerns related to this. And the duplication piece through, is addressed in option C. Because the, the schools could say, you can go to our online program or you could go to the providers that are SOEP providers, but they would be routed through the public school system. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit.
Thank you. Board member Moss.
Oh, I, I take my hand down. I'll just listen for a bit. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Board member Bellknap.
I just wanted to give just a little piece of clarity because I think we're convoluting some of this. If you look at maybe like an umbrella and down, and each of them have a string hanging down. One side is for our enrolled students who are enrolled in a public school. Today, we are not talking about those enrolled students in a public school. We are talking about the other string hanging down that are our private and homeschool students. So it's, it's a different topic than what's on the study session. But one question that was asked, I think it's interesting that I think board member Hart asked it. The funding model was created in statute for our students who are enrolled in public school. There's also a different funding model for those students who are in private and homeschool. And so I think we just need to make sure we're talking about private and homeschool students today, so we don't cross over. And maybe we'll cross over later in the presentation. But for now, this is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Huntsman.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And feel free to send the question to any staffs there. But I was looking at all these options, besides another option of, of us doing nothing and not sending a recommendation to, to the legislature, I, I think would be a mistake. But isn't there another option that, and I'm putting myself in the shoes of some of the legislators, is that they can take a look at the trend line that's just happened here in the last few years? They can choose a window, trend line, jump up, grab a number, and we're back here again. Isn't that, is, I guess my question is, isn't that another option that's before us and to move to the legislature, just add, add more money based on, on a trend line? Guess to-
May I respond to that one? Dr. Kent has her hand up, so let's have her respond. And then, and then Dr. Thompson, will you follow up?
Yeah, and just so you know, board member Davis, I can't raise my hand as a co-host, so I'm not trying to be rude.
No one thinks you're rude at all. Oh, thank you. That, that's helpful. Then let's go ahead and have Dr. Kent, and then we'll have you, you follow up. Thank you.
Okay, um, specifically, the legislature asked the board to come forward with the recommendation because they do not like being asked every year to come up with these supplemental appropriations. That's, that is why we're back here. That, that's all I wanted to say until I, until I think of the additional thing that I was going to say, so.
So my, my second question was, if we just, if we just went by raw numbers, grabbed the last few years' data for trend, I mean, that's, that just puts us back at, well, it puts us in a position for, I'm just, is that, I guess the question is still, is that an option opportunity to say that we need X and then kick the can down the road on trying to figure out how to resolve some of these other issues? If it isn't, then I, I might not be seeing it right. So that's my question.
May I respond? Yes, please, Dr. Thompson.
Thanks. So I, board member Huntsman, what you're, you're asking is basically what we're doing right now, right? That's, we project, we tell them how much we need. Some years, they give it to us, and some years, they don't. So last year, we projected and told them we're going to need, I think, six, five or six million. And we were right, they were, but they were unwilling to give it to us when we requested it. So we had to come and do a special ask and get, you know, emergency money funded so we could pay last year's allotment or like cost. And so this year, they took our projection. They said, sure, we'll give you, I think we got an additional four million or so on dollars for SOEP this year, based on our projection. But what that puts us into is if our projection is off and you can see it grows in an unpredictable way, we could be in the exact same spot we are now. So what option one does is takes our current method of like, we project, we tell them what we think it's going to be. And then what we would be enhancing in option one compared to what we have right now is putting in some legislative language that says, you're, we're, based on the projection, we're going to give you this must money, but we will allow you to go over by 20% and fund it if the enrollment meets that demand. And so that's kind of the buffer that we're entertaining in option one is to continue our current practice, but adding a buffer to afford for our predictions to not be 100% right. Cory's great at extrapolating this out and predicting what we think enrollment's going to be. She's been highly accurate. So unlikely that we would necessarily need up to 20% or whatever amount we could kind of negotiate with the legislature. But it, it is that responsibility of us to say, they are predictions. They are estimates. They're not going to be perfect. And if we don't want to have to come back every year, we need to have a buffer that says the legislature will hold at a certain amount to add to the actual given amount to cover that over if it happens. So that's what option one kind of really digs into is status quo plus an enhancement to get us out of the kind of continuous cycle of, of requests that we're in right now.
Thank you. Chair Huntsman, you have your hand up still. Do you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to say, thank you. I think that, I think for our body, I think it's important for us to know, again, where we've been and how we got to this, got to this place. But no, in the past, we've made recommendations. And of course, they didn't, they, they chose not to accept them. So I, so it's just not, it's not an absolute guarantee that whatever we move forward to. But they, they do want us at the table or input from us, and I see that. So thank you. My question's resolved.
Thank you. Board member Moss.
Thanks. I, I'll use the same preface, dumb question coming. I just want to make sure I understand the mechanics of three A. So would that mean that in order to take advantage of SOEP, a private school student would have to re-enroll for all purposes in their LEA, basically just come back in fully to the public system? And that they would get, then get, as I understand it, double the, the amount, the WPU? The funding amount would go from 723 to 1400 because they now get the full WPU for all the wraparound services, whi- which they may or may not need, but that's kind of the formula, I guess, right? Is that, am I understanding the mechanics correctly?
Absolutely.
So they would no longer be a private school student. You're basically just making this choice. And, and if you don't choose to do that, if we adopted three A, then the private school students would no longer have that choice if they wanted to stay in their private school. They'd have to give that up. That, okay.
They could stay in their private school and-
And get SOEP.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to get it through their private school. Exactly.
All right. And then that would foreclose any other option. I mean, if, if that was the option, the only way to get it is to switch back into full public and then you get double it. Okay. And that, that amount would automatically flow to them, correct? It would just simply put them back into WPU formula, whatever the-
Yep, they would enroll that student for as many courses as they wanted to take SOEP for, and then the LEA would get the WPU value for that enrollment and pay for the student to take the SOEP courses through the, the providers.
Yeah, okay. And per credit hour, that's 1400, regardless of their numbers-
On average.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent Stallings.
Sorry, I think that just at the end there, I think that board member Moss's question was answered. But it would be that they'd be fully enrolled only for those credits. So they'd still be essentially a dual-enrolled student. That's what statute defines when you are a home or private school student and also enrolling in the public education system. All homeschool and private school students already have the legal right to do that. So they could take two courses, for example, from their private, or their, their home public school. And then they could take the remaining four to six from their private school or homeschool. So I just verify that when we say fully, if they are only public school students for those one, two, or three courses that they're enrolling in, they're still private school students for the remaining portion.
Okay, then that, that's helpful. And would they go to the LEA or the public school necessarily to take the SOEP class? Or could they take that from home or their private school?
They are not required to go to on-campus to their public school. They could take, since it's an online course, they could take that from home. It's just that they're enrolled in, you know, Salt Lake City School District or Canyon School District for that course. But they'd still take the course from home or wherever they, they're taking it when they're a private school student. They could even take it at the private school if they, if they wanted to on that campus.
Okay, but the LEA would in that case still get the full WPU amount per, per credit hour, regardless of whether they were at the school and using services or facilities? Okay.
Correct. But board member Moss, the other thing that I just wanted to add, I think board member Lear was trying to ask with the fee waiver question, is now currently under the rule, if a private or a school student requires a fee waiver, actually the provider pays for that. That's what it says in our rule. I think under this option, if the student now became a student, a public school student for purposes of SOEP, then that would switch to now the LEA would cover the fee waiver portion. So there are some things that could be required, like for example, if the student doesn't have computer or Wi-Fi, things like that. Now that the student is enrolled through the LEA, there, there might be some additional costs that the LEA would incur because the student is now theirs. Also, if the student qualifies for services because they have a disability, that could also be triggered. So there's, there's a lot that the student may need in addition to just the course instruction. And when they're a private school student right now, there's no child find obligations, there's no, the, the LEA is not providing fee waivers, there's no duty to, to allow the student to come onto campus. What if they were to, if you were to choose one of these option threes and the student becomes an enrolled student in the public education system? All of those things could happen. The student could need, could need devices. The student may qualify for, for services as a student with a disability, et cetera.
Got it, okay. And would that fever, would that fee waiver money have to come out of SOEP program? Or could that be used, that can be used from, I, I'm sorry, that's a dumb question. Out of, uh, uh, from all the tutorials you've given us on fees, I forget the answer to that particular question.
No, you, you're fine. Sorry, vice chair Davis, I haven't been asking you, it's okay if I-
Go ahead.
I apologize. The rule actually explains that the, the, the LEA would pay for that. That would be apart from the fee that goes to the provider. Once they become a public school student for that one credit or two credits, then you'd have to look at the rule that how it applies to current public education students and how that works. The provider gets the set course fee. And then remember, the LEA has a portion of funds that's remained from the WPU. They would use that extra, the, the difference, the WPU fund, funding to pay for the fee waiver for, you know, any other services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board member Straight, you had your hand up, but now it's missing. Were you needing to speak?
My question was fully answered, so I appreciated board member Moss's question.
Thank you. Board member Earl.
I hope I'm not asking something that someone's answered. I'm just trying to clarify my mind, so I apologize if that's the case. The question we're asking and why we're being asked this is because additional funding is being needed for this program. Is that accurate? So the solutions would be to ask for the funding, A, right? Or B, require those that are within the program? Because if we already exceeded the limit of funding within the program, is that why? Or we're just looking at expanding it?
May I respond?
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Thompson.
Yeah, so the past three years, we've exceeded the fiscal appropriation for this program. And we've had to go and ask the, the Hill to cover the additional expenditure so we could enroll the students and complete the service.
Okay, okay. So it, there would be possibly a fee so we could accommodate more people. Am I understanding that right? Okay, or the third op is have private schools, our private school students go through the regular school. But I, this is where I'm getting lost. The cost of that is actually more. So if we add additional people, so the cost of that's more to the program itself. So I, I'm not understanding the, the issue here. It would seem we'd ask for the funding so we could cover the cost or we, we limit who can get in until the next year. And then we ask for additional funding then if we can't already get funding. But maybe I'm missing something here, so.
May I add something that I think will clarify for board member Earl?
Yes, quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a great question. Where we have option three with the WPU, WPU is guaranteed. We don't have to worry about a funding cliff on WPU. The legislature already has a mechanism in to handle if we go over the expected WPU. What we don't have is that same mechanism in the private homeschool funding that if we go over the expected enrollment, that there's some way to shore up that enrollment to guarantee that we can provide services as needed based on the demand. So to avoid the funding cliff, option three A or three B would afford for us to do that because there's already a mechanism built in to address WPU overages, whereas there's not one currently in our current model where option one would allow us to say, here's our anticipated enrollment, and we want to put a little buffer that allows us to protect that if we go over that anticipated amount, that we can still support kids up to this amount. That we wouldn't have just free rein of, we want as much money as this program can do, but there would be kind of this top amount that the legislature says, we're not going any higher than that this year.
Okay, and then I just have one other item to ask, or maybe, are, so if we would implement thi- this, this year and these private school students would then have to enroll in their regular school, their local school in order to do the SOEP, do we think that there might be a problem there? Because I, there might be a philosophical problem there with some of these families. I, I, I could almost reassure you of that. So I'm just saying it might be more problematic than, eh, we're just going to shift the funding over here because it can easily be accessed. I think we might be actually creating a limit. And maybe that's the idea, I don't know. But I think there might be families that are not comfortable with that solution. So anyways, those are my comments and thoughts.
Thank you. Dr. Kent?
Yes, um, I had two, two very significant things here. First off, Jennifer, would you like to share what the committee, which of those options the committee was most comf- the stakeholder committee was most comfortable with?
Go ahead, Cory. You were, you're in those meetings too, so if you want to-
Okay. They were 100% for option one. They really didn't want that, I, I can only assume, the administrative burden of enrolling those students, even for that additional- even for that additional WPU that they would be offered. That's number one. But number two offers Jenny's question very specifically. I had, just thinking that very same thing. This is a disincentive to private school students who are somewhat like homeschool students. They're very hesitant, you know, they're not going to want to enroll back into the public school system, especially when that means in into many school districts. Um, so I contacted Dr. Colosimo, who's the head of the Private Schools Association, and asked him about this. And he said, um, no, that that would not work for families in this system. And then his partner that he's working with, ASU Prep, who has more experience nationally, said that option was tried in Washington and it killed out the program because families, private school families just weren't willing to re-enroll. But just one third thing that pertains to that. Our private schools are using this program very differently from our public schools. Public schools, it's a student choice option. Students go enroll on their own, and that's all good. Private schools are using this the way Alpine used a math program that they set up behind the scenes to, um, to enrich the education of their students. Students didn't have to enroll in taking that particular math, you know, um, that new instructional option. It was set up for them. That's how our private school students are using this. So to ask particular students to go enroll in their resident districts might not fit with the way private schools are using this. And also, private schools are already contributing, in most cases, their own teachers to work with the provider, so they feel that they are already, you know, delivering some degree of cost. So that that takes care of a number of issues.
Thank you. Board Member Hutchings.
Thank you. I have two questions, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay, first one kind of goes with what you were just talking about. And I I it's making me wonder because, especially because there is a philosophical reason usually that they're going to a private school. Is in the process of enrolling for a private school student or for a homeschool student, how do you verify their status? Because a private school leader may, if they see there's this barrier over here and they know their parents aren't going to want to enroll them in a public school, they may tell them enroll as a homeschool student. And then they'll just divert it, and our numbers in homeschool students are going to rise because now the private school students are enrolling as homeschool students. Is that a possibility?
I actually think that that is a possibility. It it isn't one that I had thought of, but that's an alternative means of getting around that requirement to enroll them in public schools. Yes.
Then, um, thank you. My second question, um, kind of a comment, kind of a question. This program's expanding to middle school next year, so it's going to expand. The numbers are going to expand for sure. Question mark, correct?
You are, starting January first, twenty twenty-two, middle school curriculum is offered. The good part is, um, for this particular group, home and private school students, our partners, basically the Private School Association, work with us very closely, just as charter schools do when they're developing their projections to send to Kristin Lambert, to send to the, you know, the um, CDC, the Common Data Committee. They work with us to let us know what they expect so that we can bring very reliable estimates to the legislature. Or if we're putting it through the MSP process, you know, we can be very reliable in their, in our estimates. For instance, this year, out of more than an eight million dollar appropriation, something like eighty, eight million, eight hundred something, we were point seven pers- seven seven, okay, so point seven seven percent off on our estimation. And that was only because one of our providers was not satisfied with the, um, manner in which their partners were behaving, so they withdrew from some of those contracts. So we're very accurate in those estimations with the help of our private schools.
Thank you. Board Member Earl.
Um, no, I just wrote my question down. I got it going on a couple of texts and, um, forgot. I'll, sorry, I'll have to come back to it. Oh, I, oh, this is the question. Isn't there a cap on how much money is used for homeschool and how much is used for private? Isn't there like a percentage or a, it's not like everything could be used for homeschool, right? If we didn't, right? Isn't there like a max on the both of them? Is that accurate?
There, well, there is. Really, in rule, we have to allow for homeschoolers first, and anything else can be used for private schoolers after a certain date. But homeschoolers have never used up anywhere near half of that appropriation.
Okay, so that's the criteria, is a a date and then it's open for others. Okay. But but then the money's all getting used, right, at that point? Because there is a significant amount of, um, private school, schools that want access to this, um, this curriculum and these resources. So, okay, thank you.
Um, thank you. I'm gonna, we're at the top of the hour now. We have one hour left. I just want to make board members aware of the time, and we will end at three. And I'll just, uh, ask a quick question. Is, uh, what are the accountability for tax dollars differences between the options?
There is no difference in accountability between, um, public school students enrolling in the program and private school enrolling, students enrolling in the program, because each of them go through or, you know, move through LEAs. Those are the online providers that work with these. And they have very detailed requirements for, um, verifying the activity of students in this pro- in this program. They have all the same reporting requirements, teacher accreditation requirements, everything else. So there's really no difference between treatment of these students and treatment of any other students in the program.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. So those that are, would be enrolled in option three through the LEA would, um, be, would would they take the end of year assessments? And similarly, those enrolled in option one would also take like the RISE or the whatever?
Yes, yes, that's true. And typically, those have been administrate or administered through the LEA. Um, it could be administered through either, but the LEAs tend to take responsibility for that, except for ACTs. Private schools are given the option of, um, or private school students are given the option of taking ACTs through the provider if they choose.
Thank you. Board Member Lear.
Um, thank you. Now that I've heard all this discussion, I think I can distill my questions, my concerns down to two. One of them is, so under option one or A, um, who would be responsible for fee waivers? That the school of residents or the private school? Or there wouldn't be any, they just don't get fees waived?
Yeah, as as Angie spoke about, and you could ask Angie about this again. For private school students, there are no fee waiver options.
Okay, and and second question, oh, Angie had her hand up.
Vice Chair Davis. Superintendent Stallings. Thank you. So my understanding is, under option one or two, the students would continue to be private or homeschool students one hundred percent. And then they, there's the fee, if there are any fee waivers needed, it would be up to the provider or the private or homeschool. Only under option three, where they would then be enrolling as part of the, uh, public education system for that course, would then the LEAs be responsible for fee waivers?
Thank you, Angie.
Just a second, similar question. Under option one, the school district LEA of residents would not be responsible to house the student or supervise the student or anything like that. Is that correct?
So, uh, Vice Chair Davis, okay if I answer?
Please.
I should, um, I should have phrased this a little differently. For private school students, no. For homeschool students, they may still have some child find obligations and also may also be required to pay the fee waiver for homeschool students. I need to look at that. Um, but for the private school students, the rule explicitly states that the provider, um, pr- it pays for the fee waivers. So I need to look for homeschool students if there's something explicit in the rule.
So just to clarify with Angie, you're saying for homeschool students, it's possible under option one that the school of residents, I assume, or the literally the school of residents would be responsible to take care of fees that students might have to go to an SOEP course. Is that right?
Well, only to the extent if that currently is the case. So I just wanted to clarify that I knew for a fact that private school students it is that way. But I do see Board Member Bellknap saying that she knows that it it's also not the case. I just had need to look at the rule for homeschool students.
I got it. Thank you.
Trying to say, sorry.
Thank you for letting me ask, ask second questions. Thank you.
Board Member Bellknap.
This one get clarifying, providers don't charge fees.
But, right, that's.
So in the SALT program, we don't charge fees.
Yeah, but that's not what I was asking. Because the, there still would be, a homeschool student could be fee waiver eligible. And I was asking, so who covers the cost of the computer or the, or the?
The provider, the provider.
All right.
Okay, for clarity on that, that they they have to provide that.
Thanks.
In option one.
And Vice Chair Davis?
Yes, please.
I was able to quickly verify that it's the same for both private and homeschool students. So it states in the rule, if a participating student who qualifies for a fee waiver is a, or a private school student, the online course provider shall provide the participating home or private school student access to the online course, which is what I think Board Member Bellknap mentioned, if they did need a a device, for example, that would be the provider would be providing the device. Not LEA of residence or or wherever their home is located. The. Uh, before I jump over to Board Member Earl, how how do we know if they're doing that or not? Are they audited in the same way an LEA is audited for the students who take the other arm of SOEP?
Our auditors right now are, um, are auditing all of the online programs, including SOEP. And in fact, they've asked Dr. Hernandez for data in, you know, in all regards, so.
Okay, so Deputy Superintendent Stallings, will we would have the same, um, ability for auditing purposes that we do for LEAs? We would have the same ability with, um, private and homeschools if they're using public funds for these courses? Deputy Superintendent. Sure, thank you. And and Dr. Comph would know better, but I would say this. Because the, um, the SOEP providers right now, I mean, shortly, we're going to have some private providers. But even the private provided, the private entities who are being approved as SOEP providers have a relationship and are certified and approved by, um, USBE. And then the other SOEP providers are all LEA, you know, they're all associated with, currently, all of our SOEP providers are LEAs. So yes, um, I think in this instance, sometimes it gets confusing because it's students who are private and homeschool. The SOEP providers aren't currently. Now, we do have one or two that will be coming on shortly. But even those, um, upcoming private providers, um, do have to be approved and, um, by USBE. And subject to our rules. Okay, thank you, um, Board, sorry, and you were nodding your head. That's why I called on you on that last one. You are moving your head. Um, Board Member Earl.
So I'm trying to get clear in my mind exactly what fees we're talking about. We're just talking about technology access as well as maybe even internet access. Is this the type of fee we're referring to? Okay, so we're not referring to other types of fees. And so the audit would be asking if they would qualify for a fee waiver and then whether the, is that part of the audit? And then whether or not the SCLP provider is actually providing the fee waiver? Is that part of the audit? I'm just trying to understand the ambiguity around the the fees here to make sure. Because of the ones I'm familiar with, the the technologies provided for. But you're saying if there's a fee that it should be waived if they meet the criteria. Am I, is that right?
Board Member Bellknap, you're running, you're rubbing your face and nodding your head. Did you have something to add?
I have so many things to add, but I'll let Angie answer it.
Go ahead. Deputy Superintendent Stallings.
So, yes, in the rule, it explicitly states for the student to access the online course. So what, how do they access the course? It's usually they need a device and they need wifi. Now, the question is, are they getting, how are they getting their wifi? You know, that gets into a lot of detail. There may be ways. And and you know, when you start talking about private homeschool students versus regular, um, public school students, the regular public school students could stay on campus, go to the library, they access the wifi while they're there in the school. So that doesn't necessarily mean you have to provide a hotspot at home. That may be the case, though, in some instances, but I'm sure every SOEP provider has different protocols. And so I don't want to get too into the weeds, but it's really talking about fee waivers and 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 making sure the student has access to taking the course.
Okay, so that's what the fee waivers are, I, okay, I just, and I just, I, that's what I understood. But then, as we continued to talk about fees, I started wondering if we were actually referring to other themes. So I just want to make sure I was clear on that. So thank you.
Thank you. See no other hands? Uh, Dr. Camp, oh, sorry, Chair Huntsman.
Well, I just wonder if you're ready to entertain a motion.
I see no other hands, so go ahead.
Um, where's my motion? Oh, I lost it. Hang on, I'm hurrying. Oh, I was going to make a motion. I'm trying to go to, I want to say it perfectly, but my motion was going to go with with number one, but trying to see where I had that written. I'm hurrying. I apologize.
That's fine.
Okay.
I, I like.
I put it on screen, if that helps.
Make a motion that the, well, there it is. I'm sitting here with three different screens now in front of me. Imagine that. I make a motion that uh, the board approve option one funding recommendation to the SOEP private and homeschool students for SOE- SOEP private and homeschool students.
Do you have a second?
Oh, second, uh, Board Member Straight.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor that the board approves. Option number one, um, funding recommendation for SOEP private and homeschool students. Do we have questions to the?
Motion.
Yes, speak to the motion.
Um, I just think it's a next step. It's not perfect, but it's progress and a movement in camp of what the legislature is asking us to do. It is less work for the districts. And there is a little piece of that that I don't think it competes against WPU funding. I just think it's probably our best next step and also. I just think it's probably our best next step, and also it's a preferred, I also want to just bring it out, it is a preferred recommendation from the SOEP working group.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak to the motion? Board Member Cannon?
Um, yeah, I think, when I think of this kind of thing, I think of Board Member Bellknap as an expert. I wonder if she could voice and let us know which would be her preference among the three options. Putting you on the spot a bit, Laura, but I think you know more than anybody.
I'm going to allow it if Board Member Bellknap will then speak to the motion.
I'm going to speak to the motion, actually. Okay, I am going to speak to the motion. I think this motion is probably our best choice at this time, because then it's fully funded, these kids who think they're going to have this option and then are cut off at the first year, I mean, the, like in January. The other piece is, is I like to put some of this onto the legislature who created this, that they have to put a fund there to cover the demand that comes. And I also agree with Chair Huntsman, this puts a lot less burden upon our own LEAs, that they don't have to try and put kids in, out, and track them. So that's my response about the motion.
Thank you. Board Member Cannon, your hand still up? Do you have a follow-up?
No, I don't. I'm just putting my hand down now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am understanding, this is not appropriate probably as a chair, this is a one-year-only motion, correct? The Chair Huntsman, is that your understanding?
The motion, what they're going to do, they are looking at doing something different in statute. What they do with that recommendation is for this, for this next upcoming legislation, and it's, our view is subject to change depending on what, how things evolve. So I'm not putting a limit, it's to be in compliance with, my motion is to be in compliance with the House Bill 5012, and I don't think there was, I don't, I'm not sure if there was time limits on that, so that's why I'm making this motion. Maybe Angie or somebody can speak to how, how that works or is to work.
Sure. Vice Chair Davis, would you like me to answer?
Yes, please.
I think that this has been an issue for a while, as Jennifer and Corey have mentioned, where it's not just been one year where we've been short, but due to the Budgetary Procedures Act, if we get $6 million and all of that's taken up by December or January, legally, we are supposed to stop allowing students to enroll in the program in December, January. And I think that the legislature is grappling with, has been grappling with how to address this issue. So this was the purpose of this motion. I think that it's not likely to be for just a one-year solution. I think they're looking to solve this ongoing. But I also believe they wanted a recommendation from the board, because it is a tough question of competing, obviously, interests, or it's one program that then, you know, you have to look at all the programs. So I think we'll only be requested to do this one time, and then it will be, this would be the option that they would codify ongoing. That's my understanding. But I think we'll only be asked to make this recommendation once, but you never know if after a year or two, they ask us again.
May I also add to that?
Please do. I think you're muted.
Am I muted?
Now we can hear you.
Oh, and on all of, in any of our funding and funding recommendations, they're subject to change based on the environment that we're surrounded on as we prepare and go through our legislative policy and funding requests, so this isn't, I mean, a forever deal or limited to one year. My motion isn't limiting up to one year. This is today's recommendation, what would be our recommendation moving forward to meet that expectation of the House Bill 5012, and subject to new recommendations coming forward. I think you're going to, we, this group will have future recommendations on SOEP as it evolves and other online opportunities and challenges, so. Does that answer your question, Vice Chair Davis?
Thank you. Yes, sort of. Board Member Hart?
I have a bit of a concern, or I guess I need a clarification on the, on the motion. The term "fully fund", how, how would that, I don't, I don't think that was the intent. I don't know, just saying to legislature, "fully fund" something, does that mean, can we not have a dollar amount? Can we not budget? Can we not? I, it's just wide open. I mean, do you, do you just, is that really what we want to say?
I had a similar question. I'll go back to the motion maker to answer the question, do we want the legislature to fund on demand, or are we trying to set a budget amount or priority?
So that's, if I might, okay, I'll speak to it. So when I spoke earlier about other options, one of those other options is to do nothing and/or just put a ceiling on it, and nobody was asking about putting a ceiling on, on something like we have done in the past, and then they short funded us, and here we are, we have all these dilemmas. I think "fully fund", I don't think there's a significant big risk on what, what they'll, will do, because they are Utah students are needing these services. So I'm still, option one doesn't work unless it includes fully funding. If we want to do away with option one and go to a, go back to where we were before, that certainly is something that the body can consider. But for right now, it's to fully fund it for the very purposes of not rejecting students and or having students' expectations not be met. I don't think it's going to break the bank, but that is where my motion's at.
Thank you. You have a follow-up? Board Member Hart?
No, it's just a decision.
Thank you, Board Member Straight. Oh, sorry, let's go to Board Member Straight and we'll go to Board Member Bellknap. Board Member Straight, are you with us? He did send a text that he may have dropped the meeting or is, is trying to, may not be able to hear. Can you hear us, Board Member Straight? Let's go to Board Member Bellknap and try to get Board Member Straight back in.
Thank you. I might need just a little support from Jennifer, but I believe the term here "fully funded" means to give the amount that we are projecting, which as it was talked about earlier, we're pretty close on where we are, but to have them set aside some funds if the demand is higher, that, that it's available, that we don't have to go back and go through this process again, so that we can provide for those students who are wanting to complete. And Jennifer, if I'm wrong in that chair, could she speak and correct me?
Yes. Can you please speak to amounts? Dr. Thronson, does a fluctuating demand drive the amount, or does the number that we proposed earlier drive the amount in this motion?
It would be based on projections. So we would project enrollment, what we would ask for is in the language, is to have USBE annually project enrollments. The amount of funding would be based on that projection, and then to have a percentage cap above that enrollment that the legislature would be willing to fund beyond what's initially allocated. And that percentage would be something that we, if the board has a number in mind, I'm like throwing out 20%, but that would be something we probably want to put in the recommendation. That "fully fund" means based on enrollment projections that we calculate annually, and then having a buffer on top of that to ensure we can cover. Or it's just the projection, if the board would prefer, we base it on the projection and we cut it off on our projections. We are pretty good at it, so there is some high level of confidence there. But again, you just can't anticipate everything that's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Straight, did we get you back into the meeting?
I'm here. I don't know if it's going to last, but I do have the mute off, so. Wow, so, and I missed some of the discussion, I've been in and out. So hopefully, this is kosher to it. One of the things that was mentioned earlier that caught my attention is that it said overwhelmingly, in fact, I think it was unanimous among the group that we set up, that option one was what their suggestion was. Having seen, putting groups together, you know, when you bring people together and they dig down on one idea and one subject, they come with a recommendation that's very difficult for me to not accept that as being, I give it a lot of weight. Now, in the end, we do have the final say. It's our responsibility to own it. But I think based on everything I've heard, I think option one, under the circumstances, is what I think is the best.
Thank you. Board Member Hart?
Is it, is it appropriate to make a substitute, no, a substitute motion?
I don't know where our parliamentarian is. Is a substitute motion appropriate?
An amendment.
An amendment.
Amendment. Can I, can I make an amendment?
Yes, you may.
If an adder takes away.
Yeah, it's just substituting language. So instead of, can you put up what's up there right already? Whoever's driving.
Looks like she's working on it. Let's just give her a second to get it up.
Instead of saying, "fully fund", can we say, something, well, how could we put? No, replace demand with, with the, what you just said, the projection and buffer, so that it's more specific. My, because what I'm concerned about is this rule goes into effect or whatever, and then it comes time to make our priorities in the future. We're, we've already committed education dollars or said that this is our highest priority, when it may not be. I just feel like it's jumping the line if we're giving it this, this open-ended "fully fund", when that may not be our intent. We, we may have other funding priorities. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. And I, I will say that when it comes time to actually prioritize our, I'm taking a chair's prerogative here, when it comes to make our priorities, this may not be one of our priorities at all.
That, that's what I, that's, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, for a recommendation for now of what, you know, an option that we think could help figure out what to do about this with costs in the past, and I remember a legislator saying this isn't meant to be a full endless bucket of money that's going to be funded forever based on whoever wants to do it. So I don't, Jennifer Thronson made an amendment suggestion of language here. It's something you would like to use. It says, "fund based on enrollment projections plus a 20% additional amount." Would you be comfortable adding "if needed"? Because that would imply the buffer.
I'm not seeing the...
It's in the chat box?
Oh, it's in the chat box. I'm sorry, I'm waiting for my screen to change. "Fund based on enrollment", yes, I just feel like it's more specific. If that's how we're defining quote "fully fund", then put that in.
We need the amendment, we need the amendment first and a second before we speak to it.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. So is this language that you would like?
Yes, that is, that is...
Okay.
My amendment.
So we have an amendment on the table to change the words in the motion from "fully funded to meet the demand" to "fund based on enrollment projections plus a 20% additional amount if needed." Do we have a second?
I'm good to second it.
Okay, we have a second from Chair Huntsman. And would you like us to speak again to the amendment? Board Member Hart?
I, I think I took that privilege before. I just, I just want to be specific in language. I don't ever want to, there to be a misunderstanding about how much money or what money. I, I am concerned about endless buckets of money, and, and I just think it's more precise.
Thank you, Board Member Earl.
Yeah, I think just to be clear, this is not a prioritization. This is merely a dealing with this specific issue at this specific right? So anyways.
Yes, thank you. Board Member Hutchings?
What do you think about, I like this, but also adding "held in reserve" at the end? A 20% additional amount held in reserve.
So you can amend the amendment. Are you amending the amendment?
Sure, if I can.
Okay, sure.
I, yeah, I just think it clarifies our intent that we're not asking for that much plus 20% as the budget amount. We're asking for our enrollment projection plus that 20% held in reserve. And I think that's an important clarification to me.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
I don't know who got, did someone get the second?
Doesn't matter. I said it too, but somebody else did, it was Carol and somebody else.
As well, Scott.
Some deep man voice.
Okay, thank you. We'll have the amendment made by Board Member Hutchings and seconded by Board Member Lear. Would you like to speak to the amendment, Board Member Hutchings? I know you just did a little bit. Do you want to again?
I just think it clarifies the intent as I understood it.
Okay, I'm looking for hands speaking to this amendment to the amendment. Board Member Hansen?
Sorry, I had my hand up and then dropped it because I thought that the "if necessary" had been dropped. I think that that takes away from the clarity. I think it should just be a straight 20% additional amount held in reserve. I don't know if the maker of the amendment to the amendment would agree to a friendly revision, but that wasn't on the screen when I dropped my hand before, and I know I can't make a third amendment, so just like to put that out there.
Was that your intent, Board Member Hutchings, making the amendment?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
I understood it as such as well. Board Member Bellknap, you had your hand up, but I see it down now. Okay, seeing no other hands. We're going to vote now. We have a, an amendment to the amendment that the in, that the motion in, that the motion read at the end, "held in reserve for S E O P, S O E P private and homeschool students" as opposed to, can't remember what it was before, "as needed or if necessary." All those in favor, please vote. Or actually, just vote because we're electronic, so you can vote yes or no.
Yes, this is Natalie Klein.
Thank you, Natalie. I'm going to enlist board member, or vice chair Belknap's help. I see unanimous.
I'm seeing the same.
Thank you. Uh, this amendment to the amendment passes. We have an amendment on the, before the board that in this motion, the motion would read that the board approves a funding recommendation to be based on U S B E enrollment projections plus a 20% additional amount held in reserve for S O E P private and homeschool students as opposed to based on, or as opposed to the language "fully funded to meet demand". Please vote.
Yes, this is Natalie.
Thank you. I see that as a unanimous vote. Thank you, Chair Huntsman. We have a motion before the board that the board approves a funding recommendation to be based on U S B E enrollment projections plus a 20% additional amount held in reserve for S O E P private and homeschool students.
Cindy, I think if you were to state it correctly, you would say as amended, did you say as amended? I, I didn't know if I heard that, sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat it.
Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I do it wrong. We have, but a motion on the floor as amended to read that the board approves a funding recommendation to be based on U S B E enrollment projections plus a 20% additional amount held in reserve for S O E P private and homeschool students. Please vote.
Yes, this is Natalie.
Thank you. I see this vote as unanimous.
Yes.
The same.
I didn't see Brent.
Brent, did you, can you hear me? Did you vote? I see his name. I know he's second line he was on has dropped when he was talking earlier. So do we need to move forward without his vote?
Yes.
That, do we put him as an absent?
I will have to get clarity on that. We'll have to chase him down, but I thought I stopped, but I, I see that he's not on one side.
He's texting me saying, "I voted." He keeps logging in. Yes, I can't get into audio. I voted. Is that something that we can take as a text to the chair or does he need to try?
We cannot. We, he'd have, we'd have to be able to see it.
We cannot take that, board member straight. We, we need you to be able to vote on the screen, but we can't see your vote for some reason, nor can we hear you.
He could call in and like give verbally.
Do we have?
His vote won't be, his vote won't be inventory.
Even if he calls in, his vote won't be inventory?
I'm on now.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, can, can you vote? Just give us a verbal vote.
I voted yes on all three.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess I couldn't get it off mute.
Great, thank you. This motion passes unanimously. Thank you. You're all wonderful. We're, we're 24 minutes early ending our meeting. We'd like, uh, Drs. Thronson and Camp for their presentation and their expertise and their graciousness as we asked our many questions. And also Deputy Superintendent Stallings, you answered quite a few too. We appreciate all of you and thank you, board members. Have a wonderful weekend.
Thanks.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, be safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.